These are people who are struggling so hard to emancipate themselves from the oppression in Nigeria, but they lost their lives. So I would like to invite everybody to just, you know, stand up and let us have a one minute silence on behalf of those who passed away. Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
So before we present our more young people on stage, we'll ask people to stand up and do the national anthem. But one thing is, before we do the national anthem, I want you to think deeply about the words in the anthem. And know that, you know, the words in that anthem have been raped, abused, dishonored. There is no peace and unity in Nigeria. So when you sing that anthem, you know they are all lying to ourselves. Because none of us is worthy to sing that anthem. So while we stand up to sing that anthem, let us sing it like we've never done before. Let us sing it while letting the words sink, getting deeply into our minds and, and let that come to us naturally. So, uh, if anybody needs to give us the national anthem, then we could also... Take it back!
Action!
Okay, so, uh, you know, one thing for me, people know that I'm always passionate about the event. These events have been put together the way it is. We didn't have people here in Melbourne who worked so hard behind the scenes donating money, cash, in kind. We had people pay for flights, we had people donate, we had people pay for the hall. Everybody was involved. So, but I would like to invite Arinze on stage to come out just to give a speech of acknowledgement to everyone, our sponsors and everyone who has donated to making this a success. Arinze? Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
Um, I can see happy faces all around here. Wow, Melbourne is doing great. Well, um, before I proceed, um, I want to do a formal introduction. Many of us right here don't know who I am. My name is Mr. Arinze and I'm a father, a husband, and I've got three kids and I'm an event manager and a promoter as well. And before we proceed, um, I want to, if being given the opportunity to crack your brains a bit, so we can cheer up and see how, how we go. I have a little joke I would like to tell. Um, take it back Sean, should I proceed?
Yeah!
Okay. Um, it has to do with a friend of mine who is a stammerer, a stutterer, someone that stammers. And I believe some of you here must have come across people like that. And, uh, I must encourage us to always be careful with them. Okay, I'll take you back to when we were in secondary school. And I have very brilliant classmates, very outspoken, intelligent. You know what happened? We were supposed to have an English class and the English teacher came into the class and said, "We have to do what they call dictation. You have to dictate a word and the longer the letters are, the more points you get." And in that classroom, I've got, uh, my friend, who is always there to answer every question in the classroom. And before the teacher can say a word, a move to the first to make or dictate a word for the class member. This friend of mine, this guy is Mr. Bodemus. Permit me to use our broken English because they are Nigerians. Before we can say anything, Bodemus, this guy has said, "Promotion." Wow, the teacher was like, "Wow, that's brilliant, how many letter word is that?" And he said, "Nine letter word, so Mr. Bodemus, you've got nine points." I have this Oyibo friend of mine in that classroom, the guy is too yellow, Oyibo is too fine, white boy. And I have also the next classmate of mine, before Mr. Bodemus could finish with his promotion point, nine points, he raised his hand, his name is Mr. Ametu Okolo, and he says, "Prescription." Wow, that's awesome. How many letter word is that? It's a ten letter word. So, Mr. Bodemus became angry, nine points, Ametu ten points. And I've got another friend of mine, Mr. Charles Odunta Day, he raised his hand and said, "Prescription." However, all the letters and the words has to start with P. So that is the assignment given, you know, to us by the teacher. And he said, "Prescription," and "Prescription" is what? Twelve letter word. Wow, so he's got twelve points. Omoh, Iday corner, oh this guy is too savvy book. Ah, I need to make a point, how am I gonna do that? I remember I have a friend of mine who goes to Presbyterian church. You know, I say, "Oh Presbyterian," wow, that's a long word. That's why I raised my hand, Presbyterian Arizim. Fifteen letter word, wow! Mr. Bodemus, I'm Ametu Verex, Charles, ah, I'm between everybody. Ah, that my friend, where be Oyibo, where be stammerer, don't they, they vibrate, they Verex. Ah, you need to, you need to, you need to say something, you need to say something. Before I finish my own, that's why Oyibo raised hand. And that my Oyibo friend of mine, his name is, um, Mr. Bobby Agbo, he too yellow. When I heard his name as first, I was like, "Ah, Oyibo, the B F O name, Bobby Agbo." Oh, you too, you be Oyibo man, Aussie boy. Are you in this classroom? Wow. Oh yeah now, Bobby, you a stammerer, how do you want to say this? I quickly run, hold people inside Bobby book. Wait him Bobby one thought. I tie out. The guy go, "Sacha, yo, we love." Psychopathology. That's a medical term. And it simply means the investigation and, um, understanding and treatment of, um, mental disorder. But it's gonna be hard for Bobby to pronounce it. Psychopathology, how does he wanna do that? Oh yeah now, Bobby talk. Sa, co, 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 co. Oh, sa, co, co, papa. Oh, baba. And you know when stammerers done their behave like that, you need to give them chance. Me at first, we draw fifty seats. So I tell me, "That guy, I'll tell me, he almost been slapped." Teacher not understand the system. That's what, the teacher go talk, say, "Ah, Mr. Bobby, what's taking your time? I thought you already prepared to say this." And so Bobby does a do, sa, 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 co, 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 papa, to, 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 to. As the teacher here, I should give a slap. Better, what is, what like that, teacher say, "Yeah!" I say, "Everybody, everybody jump in the skill, come on, ah." Anyway, that's just it. There's just a small joke I just have to, you know, say to everybody. So, um, the lesson from this, you know, when you have a stammerer friend of yours and when they are provoking, they are getting upset, you just have to be very careful. Give them space and, um, be warm because you can receive your own slap, I tell you. Anyway, um, the privilege of my, um, and honor, you know, for me to be here on stage and to recognize and acknowledge all the best sponsors of this event. And in no particular order, I would like to acknowledge the support of our received from the full one people, Omoye Dele Shoray, for which it adds to Nigeria's in Australia and for being here today. We welcome you, sir. Take it back!
Action!
We have the back all the way. We're gonna stick to the end of page. Anyway, I mustn't forget, um, our DJ in the house, DJ Darni, he's been doing good. It's the same guy that played for us after, um, Nigerian Repentance Day event. You recognize, thank you my brother. And then we welcome Charles of Nus, as I knew standing next to him. He's a very nice and active member of A S C, who recognize the presence here, the welcome. And we have Akili Olusana.
Olusa.
Akili Olusa, Akili, I represent. Akili Olusa, I've got, um, Ugo Chuku, Hero H J. We have Ametu Adogwokolo. We have, uh, Kulele Adesuwa. We have Dr. Femiiri Olutayo. We have Fred Alale, I understood that Fred will be here. Fred have, Fred have come to Sydney for our Nigerian Victoria President, if I'm wrong, he's taken forever. And, um, he dropped a message that is probably in Sydney for some urgent meeting that came on. So, we must recognize him, Fred Alale. And then we have, um, Tombe, Akilu here. We have Yunus Olatudum. We have Jeff Osayede. And we have our beautiful sister and mother, Molly Muse. We thank you all for your support, we thank you all for all that you've done. We acknowledge all your efforts and together, we have agreed to take it back. We must, we must take it back. Take it back!
Action!
Thank you everyone for having me here. And we must proceed, Astral, thank you. Arinze, you're asking a lot, eh? Okay, so, um, we would, we would still do as, I'm friends for, we still do as, I'm friends with the stammerer in that class who's talking about that. Okay, so, um, many acknowledge Jeff Gomis here, uh, to our guest on the floor. So before we go ahead of introducing Shoray on stage, you know, let's keep it quick, let's keep it brief, let's get to the crux of the matter. And just a quick introduction. So before I just do a bio intro of Shoray, I will just play a quick video on his timeline, when he started and how he got here. So it's just a short video. Take it back!
Action!
A S C, take it back! Just a summary of his timeline before I go into detail about the history of it. And inviting, uh, this event, who are watching to us, which, uh, which is, yeah, I guess. Play the talk and, uh, let's see what we have as, uh, just get to the bottom of the mission of plan, uh, what the plan is. Okay, so, Omoye Dele Shoray is a Nigerian human rights activist, approved in the Democratic Campaigna, founder of Saharan Reporters, most of us were stuck on it, was Saharan Reporters. Uh, and a presidential candidate in the Nigerian 2019 election. Um, he's New York-based Saharan Reporters in Nigeria, is Nigeria's most reliable news source, tackling corruption with investigative journalism. It engages over ten million viewers monthly worldwide. He's an alumnus of Columbia University with master's degrees in public administration. For those people who say they get experience. Um, he has been passionate about good governance in Africa and upon declaring his intention to run for presidency, held in February this year, he's traveled several countries around the world, engaging Nigerians in diaspora and locally. And that's gonna make him one of the first presidential candidates ever from Nigeria to engage Nigerians, to engage Nigerians in diaspora and locally as well. He's also gonna be the first ever presidential candidate to visit Nigeria in Australia. Take it back!
Action!
A S C, take it back!
Action!
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for Omoye Dele Shoray.
Nigeria is a strong nation, we can see it go. We are broken, quite a lot of it's wrong. Nigeria is a beautiful heart, but our bad will always come to the evil people. What about us? What about all the times you said you had the answer? What about us? What about all the very happy and rockers? What about us? What about all the nights we had in disaster? What about love? What about trust? What about us? We have problems that need to be solved. We have children that need to be watched. We hope that we, we can only hold, but man, we fooled us. Enough is enough. Sticks themselves that break these bones, but then we will be ready. Children, are you ready? Take it back! Women, are you ready?
Take it back!
Men, are you ready?
Take it back!
Parents, are you ready?
Take it back!
Thank you so much. That's a beautiful one from Michael Alofo Kai, who's the son of a lady who is filming me to my left here, Dusy Bolodil, who Alofo Kai, who's been my host in Brisbane the last two days. I am excited to be with you today and I bring plenty of greetings and love from Nigeria, your home country. And I understand that it's ten AM in Nigeria now. Uh, people are working up just as we're going to sleep. When I was coming from Nigeria, I told them I was coming to the end of the war. But I got here and discovered that it's the beginning of the war. So Australia, thank you so much for making this possible. I want to thank everybody that's been involved in making this a possibility. This is the second attempt to actually visit Australia after we declared some eight months ago to rescue Nigeria. I mean, I'm using the word "we" because all of us are engaged in this project. Myself, myself, the children, your grandparents at home, the unemployed, the abused, the disrespected, uh, people who have been mismanaged by a political class that is discredited and ultimately most we are banned out in our life. So, we are here once again, actually have been told to discuss the future of our country, Nigeria. Nigeria is, uh, two hundred million people. Uh, it's, uh, just one fourth the size of Australia. Australia is four times bigger than Nigeria. But Australia has got twenty-seven million people, Nigeria has got two hundred million people. Very interesting people, very dynamic people, very brilliant people, very hardworking people. But unfortunately, we have one bad luck leadership in Nigeria. And that leadership is not only affecting the progress of the Nigerian nation and its people, it's affecting the progress of one of the most continents in the, in the world, the African continent. So, what do we decide some eight months ago? I, and a lot of friends of ours, decided that we throw our hearts in the ring to challenge the political cabals in Nigeria to make sure that we end their reign and we retire them permanently sufficiently enough that our country can experience progress, prosperity and peace. And that message has gone round the world, it has also gone round Nigeria, taking me to about thirty states within Nigeria, out of thirty-six states. It has also taken me to almost now some fifteen cities around the world or more. We've done over a hundred events, town hall meetings, uh, just meeting and greeting Nigerians, entering into churches, going to mosques, marketplaces, visiting the grassroots, visiting palaces and, uh, all kinds of places, people are changing ideas, engaging massively on social media. And where we are today is that we can report to you that Nigerians are ready to take their country back now. And Nigerians are not only ready in Nigeria, Nigerians are ready all over the world, united to bring an end to the misery that has been visited upon our country and our people all over the world. If I ask you here, one thing that you'd love to see or do is to return back to your homeland, Nigeria. Yes, we are here in Australia, it doesn't matter how beautiful it is, how nice, warm, cold it might be. Every time we wake up in the morning, before we go to sleep, anytime we meet our other colleagues, fellow Nigerians, what are we talking about? We're talking about how Nigeria can become a better place. As I often do, when I travel on these trips, we live stream on the good, good things that are happening in other places. And it's very sad to report to you that in all the countries that I've been in the world, including on the continent of Africa, this includes South Africa and Ghana, there is no way that I've been that is not better than Nigeria. There's no airports that are flown into anywhere in the world that is not better, you know, uh, bigger, better organized than our airports in Nigeria. There is no school that I've been to outside of Nigeria, including in Ghana. Ghana are workplaces, that is not better than the schools we have in Nigeria. There is no hospital that I have been to outside of Nigeria that is not better than the hospitals in Nigeria. There's no road that I've driven on or be driven on that is not better than the roads in Nigeria. So the question you ask yourself all the time is, "Who cost us? Who did this to us?" Particularly because we are also some of the most religious people in the world. So, by experience, by faith, we are closer to God. So why is it that we are closer to God, but yet God does better for people who are not as close as we are to Him? So there must be something wrong. But there's no big deal about what is wrong with Nigeria because Nigeria continues to reward the enemy of Nigeria with social and political promotions from time to time. And in two thousand and nineteen, Nigeria is about to make another fundamental mistake. I repeated a number of fundamental mistakes or errors. As I say in Merusoka, unforced errors and, or unforced error of voting into office, a president that will walk in against the interest of Nigeria. And you and I know who these two candidates are because there are about ninety-one political parties, but not all the political parties are presented presidential candidates. But now, we have two major political parties, the All Progressive Congress and the People's Democratic Party. In Nigeria Palace, we call the APC, All Promises Canceled or All Past Criminals. And the PDP is referred to as People Deceiving People. Yes, that's their name in Nigeria. If by chance, we make a mistake of voting for any of these two guys, sorry, this is not supposed to be our slideshow, uh, or any of these two political parties, Nigeria is going down the toilet. It's not as if we are not there yet, but they are about to flush us down completely, the system. And as I tell people, if Abubakar Atiku wins the election, he will put Nigeria on eBay or Alibaba, he will sell Nigeria finally, yes. If Buhari wins, well, good luck to everybody who is expecting any form of progress. So we have clearly some four months to steer Nigeria in a different direction. And the direction is a direction of hope, a direction of progress, is a direction of unprecedented development. Because now we have young people, young people who have signified their intention to rescue Nigeria with the help of other young people or even older people. I don't want to make it sound like in an attempt to save Nigeria, we have this schism that is a division between the old and the young. Our contention is not that people are old or young. As you know, there are young people in Nigeria who are completely useless in political office. I don't want to name names so that I don't waste your time, but you know them. And there are old people who are not exactly bad. But our problem is that we have a problem of the age of the ideas of the young, old people who have been running Nigeria. So what am I trying to, what am I trying to tell you? The same guys who have been in Nigeria, running Nigeria since, probably some of you were born or some of you, your adult life are the same people still running Nigeria in twenty eighteen and subsequently they want to continue in twenty nineteen. So if you were around in nineteen eighty-three, you knew a young guy named Buhari. He was forty-two years old at the time he became the head of state, right? If you were around in nineteen ninety-two and you heard about two political parties, the National Republican Convention, N R C, and the Social Democratic Party, S D P, you knew of S D P presidential candidates, I mean aspirants in those days, a guy named Abubakar Atiku contested against MKO Abiola during the Adjust Convention. He was also forty-two years old. But today, these same people are in their seventies. Atiku is about seventy-three years old and Buhari is officially, his football age, soccer age, is around seventy-six. But people who know him very well says he's... But people who know him very well says he's around the T something. His younger sister is thirty-two years old officially. And it's, it's the truth. He himself even went to London last year after spending some hundred days. He came and gladly announced to Nigeria that his doctors found that he's one year older than his declared age. Told Nigerians, I'm not making this up. So we come from a very bizarre country where the president of the country is older than the country. Nigeria is fifty-eight years old, our president is seventy-eighty-something years old. So you can imagine the reason why we are not making progress. And what we are doing now is that I, Omoyele Shorere, has presented myself to lead Nigeria to the path of glory. I have presented myself to lead Nigeria to a new form of renaissance. I presented myself to dedicate our commitments to a future that is different because I know based on experience, based on research, based on integrity and also experience, I mean, uh, a pedigree that is well known that Nigeria could be completely better than what it is today. So, but as I mentioned earlier, people who were in their forties, head of state of Nigeria, are asking me at the age of forty-seven, what experience did I have? In fact, some Nigerians who have internalized oppression so badly that they can't think are asking that I should go and start from the local government at the age of forty-seven. Not only am I forty-seven years old, I have a master's degree. I have traveled the world, I've spent nineteen years living in the US. I have exposure, right? And I have a clear understanding of how to run the country. I'm healthy, largely physically and mentally, you know, alas, thank you. Uh, as you guys love to ask me, I have enough stamina to steer the ship of states in a positive direction, to steer it out of turbulence and out of the systematic and hysterical condition of destruction to which it has been placed in the last fifty-eight years. And somebody asking for experience. But the truth is that I have experience, great experience in doing what is right as a young person, helping to fight for democratic rule in the country, as a young person setting up one of the best media houses that competed globally. In fact, of all the presidential candidates today in Nigeria, I'm probably the only person who has ever invented something in Nigeria. The rest of them never invented anything. They stole, stole and destroyed. And the more they stole, the more they are rewarded with social and political promotion. And that is what I'm asking that we should end this time around. And I'm not reading from any paper, I'm speaking from the bottom of my heart. I'm speaking from the bottom of you guys' hearts as well. I'm saying and giving life and breathing oxygen into our collective desire to change our objective conditions in Nigeria. That never again should Nigeria experience the kind of terrible leadership we've had in the last fifty-eight years. That never again should Nigeria be burdened by a body some wicked political set of people that we now refer to as political cabals, whose only interest is to stranglet the development of the country. Nigeria is today completely in a state of arrested development. Anytime there's a chance for Nigeria to make progress, these leaders will go and squeeze Nigeria's neck so that Nigeria don't experience the kind of progress that other people take for granted in the world. One of the things I do when I travel to places like Australia is to livestream to the rest of Nigeria and say to our brothers and sisters, I say, look at what we take for granted. We just came from a neighborhood where we're staying. And I was asking them, the neighborhood looks like the richest neighborhood in Nigeria, like Lucky and Victoria Land and Maitama. And my host or our host was telling us that poor people live there. Well, it depends on what you call poor. The people you describe as poor in Australia are our own rich people in Nigeria. And it's the truth because they are living in all these nice houses. You know, we have a lake, artificial lake in front of the place. They have sideways, the highways are okay. They're talking about education, they're talking about renewable energy. You see solar panels all over their houses and you can feel governors. As I sit here, you are salted with good governors. You know, here they punish you with good governors. In Nigeria, they punish us with bad governors. And we must reach a point in the life of Nigeria that all of us must bond together and make a pledge, which is not the national pledge, not the national anthem. It's a pledge that the dignity of the Nigerian person must be restored. We must get to a point in the life of Nigeria, we must say enough is enough, that we cannot continue like this. And it depends and behooves on every one of us. We must, for the first time, for those who have never done it before, have done it since I went to the university, become conscientious objectors against a kind of systematic, rotten governors or governors of Nigeria. We must say to them, at this point, we are not going to accept you to continue to drive our future into perdition. So that's what I'm here. And in doing this, the question is, how are we going to do this? How do we want to approach it all? Some of us are so overwhelmed with situation of Nigeria that we've given up. In fact, what I hear from a lot of people is they're saying, look, until you guys came on board, I had given up on Nigeria. Some people don't plan to go back to Nigeria anymore because for you to travel to Nigeria, you know, you have to pray for months that you make it through common customs or police kidnappers. And that there are no highways in Nigeria that can take you from the airport to your final destination without somebody hearing bad news. As we started this meeting with today, three young people who were campaigning for one of our governorship candidates in Delta State, plunged into a river in Agbaro in Delta State. Last night, the same place, somebody plunged, a whole car plunged into the river. Reason, every bridge, as you know, by every standard should be constructed with guardrails to the left and right. The one in Delta, this particular one in Agbaro, had no guardrails. If he had, it's inferior type because they've stolen and stolen and robbed Delta into its stone edge. But it's not only Delta, it's the rest of Nigeria. Again, I come back to how. And we have developed a ten, I mean, ten-point agenda, a template to rescue Nigeria. What are Nigeria's biggest problems? A lot of problems, depends on who you are asking. If you ask somebody in the Nigeria Delta region, they'll tell you it's pollution. If you ask somebody in the northern part of Nigeria, they'll tell you it's security. If you ask somebody in the middle of Nigeria, they'll tell you it's hunger, starvation, agriculture. But we know that there are ten things that must be done simultaneously, what we call Pare Pasu, for Nigeria to experience the kind of development and progress it needs to experience. And one of it is that every Nigerian must feel secure inside Nigeria, security. The second aspect of it is power. Without electricity, energy, we are not going anywhere. I don't care what anybody tells you. It is not happening that you can have development when you don't have energy, you don't have power, you don't have light, as we call it in Nigeria. Number three is our infrastructure, uh, must be taken care of in such a way that our roads, bridges, rail lines, schools are such, at such levels that can deliver to the hopes and aspirations of two hundred people in Nigeria. Number four is corruption. Of course, I don't need to tell you about it. Corruption is our number, third religion, after Christianity, Islam. The third thing that every Nigerian worship is corruption. The third thing that they're likely to participate in even unconsciously is corruption. Because if you walk into Nigeria today with the mentality of the Westerner, I don't want to give, I don't want to give, after three months, you discover that you can't get anything done. You start giving a little bit because your driver is corrupt, right? The policeman is corrupt, your mechanic is corrupt, your Megant is corrupt. And they don't see anything wrong with it. Everybody somehow is participating in it. But it is not as much as everybody's corrupt as a problem, but that the leadership is forcing people to be corrupt because you can't get services delivered to you without being corrupt. You cannot get a teacher to teach your kids without having to go and bribe the teacher, even if it is with yam or plantain, right? You can't get a doctor to treat you without somehow offering something in return for the treatment. You can't get a university lecturer or professor, as we call them, to teach you properly without giving sex in return for proper, uh, marks in the university. You can't get anything done without corruption. The next thing is an economy that works for the Nigerian people. You have heard about Nigerian economy, I don't want to go there. I believe that Nigeria doesn't even have an economy. We are just doing what we call a robombo. It is rob my bag and rob your bag economy that we do in Nigeria. But the real economy that we work for Nigeria is the kind of economy that provides jobs for the timid, young population of the country. Over seventy percent of our young people are below the age of thirty. A lot of them have graduated from university, lose jobs. And with security in place, with power, infrastructure in place, we can employ over five million Nigerians within two and a half years. Why am I saying this? If you guys have read news in the last few days about Africa, you know that Egypt just delivered on a one fifty, uh, I think it's about seventeen thousand megawatts of electricity that was completed in two and a half years. Nigeria has not been able to complete Lagos about on highway just to refurbish it in twenty years. I'm sure you find your neighbor in your neighbor who's something that has not been completed since you have been around. Uh, the next thing is of course restructuring of Nigeria. This is one touchy subject that affects a lot of people, especially from the south. Uh, it is done in such a way that the debate is tearing Nigeria apart. The people in the north thinks that restructuring of Nigeria means that Nigeria will break and they will lose access to Nigeria's resources that is coming from the south. The people in the middle feels like, well, restructuring will give them the kind of protection they need from their overlords. And the people in other parts of Nigeria thinks that, well, restructuring will empower people more. No, what we're saying is that if you want to restructure Nigeria, you have to fundamentally change the document that governs Nigeria, which is the Nigerian constitution. The Nigerian constitution is a fake and fraudulent document imposed on it by the Nigerian military, not the people of Nigeria. And what we are saying is that if you want to restructure Nigeria, I tell you right, you must allow young people to be in the driver's seats that we structure. Because our future, that is at stake everywhere in the world. As you know here, young people are the ones determining the leadership or how the state of, I mean, the ruler of the state is, uh, is, 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 is engineer everywhere else in the world. I heard in Australia, you guys love change so much that you change your prime minister almost every week. You know, we need to be in a position where at least every four years we can change our leaders if they are not performing very, very well. So restructuring is very important to us. But restructuring is just be, it's not just the buzzwords of state police, devolution of power. It has to be something that is fundamentally more cohesive and compelling than just what you are hearing. And what I say or what we have said from our team, taking back and our party, African Action Congress, is that restructuring cannot happen without engaging young people in the restructuring proj- project. And the first way to start is to elect a vibrant, brilliant, exposed young person with integrity, with capacity, with capability, and an understanding of how to make things work in Nigeria. And restructuring will start from there. Next to restructuring is of course health. When we did our research starting from this, health is the number one need of most Nigerians. Reason is that as we speak, over seventy to eighty million Nigerians have never met a doctor before. And when they are lucky to meet a doctor, the doctor is not diagnosing what is wrong with them. The doctor is advising them based on the complaints they brought to the doctor. So if you go to meet a Nigerian doctor, you tell him what is wrong with you. It is not the doctor who is treating you based on what is wrong with you. What I'm saying is that if you go to a hospital here in Australia, before a doctor tells you what's wrong with you, they carry out tests. They test your urine, they look at your eyes, they test your temperature. In Nigeria, the doctor sees you and say, what is wrong with you? You even tell him, sir, I have malaria, you know? And because malaria is the commonest ailment in Nigeria. The doctor then starts treating you based on your own diagnosis. Say you have malaria, yes, sir. And they start putting you on antimalarial drugs. If it doesn't go in three days, the doc, you come back to the doctor and say, the malaria has not gone. They say, so what is wrong with you this time? You say, well, I have typhoid. So after the doctor treats you for another six days and your typhoid is not disappearing, you come back and say, doctor, the problem has not gone anywhere. He will say, go and see your pastor. Or then when your pastor sees you, he says, somebody is bothering you in your family. And that is our healthcare system in inertia. It must sounds funny to you, but I'm sure you have heard this story before. You have lost somebody.
Take it back! Action!
You have lost somebody to misdiagnosis. I'm sure, uh, you've lost somebody. Our friend here, uh, they lost a member of their family. She had thrombosis and the doctor diagnosed that she had a fracture and put a POP on thrombosis, you know? This is somebody who has blood clot in her leg. A doctor went and put POP over it. Until she started telling the doctor, I'm not feeling better, the pain really was. The doctor said, don't worry, don't worry, until she died. So we lose people like that every time. So health is number one priority. And what do we intend to do? We intend to hire people, over one hundred and sixty thousand head professionals to find into the Nigerian society or communities and start even this by checking people's blood pressure. Because the greatest killer in Nigeria, that I know, or that I've heard about of this health diseases, you know, if you don't even check their blood pressure and, you know, when you see people fall in and die, you know, you don't wake up the next day. Instead of trying to find out who killed them, they start pointing out witches and wizards in their family who kill them in their sleep. That is not the way to govern a country, right? You hardly can find a teaching hospital in Nigeria that can be called a hospital. In fact, they used to call Nigerian hospitals consulting centers. They are no longer consulting centers because you can't even find any medical consultants left in the country. Most of them have left the country. But a lot of them are willing to come back if they find the conditions that can help them to come. In fact, a lot of Nigerian medical professionals are willing to go back to Nigeria and work for free if they can have a country that can accommodate their expertise and skill sets. So it is very, very important that health is made a priority because without health, we can't have wealth. And the next other three things are of course education. And these things are not strange to you. You practically have free education here. I saw some Nigerians yesterday at U, uh, University of Queensland who told me they are here on scholarship provided by the Australian government, not the Nigerian government. But the small country of Liberia just declared free tuition in their university three days ago. Nigeria has got no education. You know, our educational system again is such that a professor believes that until you fail, he has not taught you. Yes, I've been a professor in the university in the US for eight years. If the number of students failing in your class is higher than is expected, you are the one who will get fired. But in Nigeria, a professor is promoted based on the number of people they fail. They will tell you on your first day of class that how many people are in this class, say forty-something. So last year, only three people passed my class. How can you say that on your first day of class? It's a kind of mindset we have. But beyond that is also the problem of curriculum which needs to be changed. Uh, after that is agriculture. If you are here in Australia, the Australian government is always asking If you are here in Australia, the Australian government is always asking for help. You know, asking Nigeria to call for help, you know, to have some kind of partnership so that we can grow our land, we can till and cultivate our land. There are millions and millions of acres of land to be grown in Nigeria. But because farmers are not getting the right kind of help they need, they're not getting essential services, they're not getting the kind of loans they need. Africa or Nigeria cannot boast of full security. Instead of governments buying tractors, they are buying what they call prodigy. You find a government with fifty prodigy and there is no tractor, no one single tractor, he is taken. So our priorities are wrong. Finally is tourism. And after saying that, uh, you know what I'm talking about. Uh, tourism is not just something you decree into existence, right? It has to be something that is developed with other conditions that are supposed to encourage people to come to your country. For example, if you don't have security, it doesn't matter how many lumbar rocks you have in your country, nobody is coming near your country. If there are no roads, uh, infrastructure, it doesn't matter how many kubos is spring, warm water, you know, blood water you have, nobody is going, coming to your country. And you know that today, even as Nigerians, most of you would prefer to go to Jamaica or other Caribbean islands for holiday than to go to Nigeria. You know, most people go to Nigeria out of pity or because of nostalgia. Uh, and when before you go, you know what it is. And when you want to take your children to Nigeria, you know how much effort it takes to get your children to travel with you. Because first they keep telling you, daddy, I don't want to go to Nigeria. And when you take your children to Nigeria and you bring them back, most likely they don't want to go back, right? And it then becomes a situation that the only time you remind your children about your country is when you want to use Nigeria to threaten your children, when they don't behave at home. You tell them, I'm taking you to Nigeria. I say, daddy, whatever you want me to do, I'll do it for you. I don't want to go to Nigeria, never. So this is our story and this is how we intend to intervene. And we want you to interrogate these ideas that we have put together. Uh, in having this town hall meetings, there's something I love about it. We don't make any assumptions that we already know everything. In fact, these town hall meetings we've been having around the world has helped us to understand how many Nigerians are out there who even know better than those of us who are contesting. And you know, the skill sets, the brilliance, the intelligence, the exposure of Nigerians is amazing. And you guys have to just be thankful that we are still out there doing great things. The only place that don't work for a Nigerian person is Nigerian nation. The moment they take you out of Nigeria, you shine. What in Nigeria is like, they're always perpetually using buckets to cover your candles or your lantern. It's like you must not shine. It's the business of leadership in the country to make sure that you don't progress. And that must change. So on that note, I want to thank you all once again for coming to, uh, this event tonight. I know it's Friday night, you could have been elsewhere, but you are really, really concerned about the progress of the country and you have taken our time to come see us. And I want to thank you so much for taking our time to see us. And I've been told that you have questions. And there's usually a lot of questions and loaded questions. Uh, feel free to ask the questions and I will be glad to answer to the best of my abilities. Uh, thank you once again for coming, thank you.
Take it back! Action! Action!
You're going to join our personal session. So, uh, I think to rest you, come to the front and stand there and ask your questions to be.
So, um, I can get you the first question, right? Yeah, okay, okay.
Take it back! Action!
So, I invite you to raise up your hand if you have a question for Mr. Shororak. Okay, let me start from my right and left hand side, okay? Uh, I'll give you one. No, I'm just giving, whether it's comments or a question, I'll give you a number, okay? So I'll give you a number. Number one, please raise up your hand next to me. Yeah, so number one. Number two, I'm going in red, chest. Uh, number three, sir. Number four. Wait now, I'm in this room now.
Number five! Action!
I'll give you number four, right? Yeah, number five, I'm going in red. Number six, number six, sir. Number seven, I hear there's no president. Number eight, class. Number nine, service. Number ten, uh, they are, no, yeah, good. Yeah, so please, let's go to our number, so we take the first three. Shororak, you jumped in there, we address this one after that part of three, within another part of three, I think that is pretty good. Okay, so let's go, you, um, give us your name and just briefly what you do in Australia because we also want to harvest, uh, you know, our area of expertise because in another two, three years, maybe of course we can rush get back to Nigeria to make our, uh, professional knowledge and to get back to the country. So please, very briefly, straight to the point, sir.
Hello everyone, I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm ready. When I be saying, um, Mr. Shororak, I actually want to say some, you know, really say thank you for standing up and saying, look, it's enough, it's time for people to actually, you know, fight and really get a good country that works for them, you know? And not the place where people are treating like fools and animals. So I'll actually go through your questions for each day and try and, try and make it really easy. So I want to understand, um, you know, what, what is the core values of, you know, the AAC party? So I understand now it's not, it's not just value, it's a movement. So I want to understand how, you know, the hierarchy of the, of the plan works. So, you know, how people, you know, give accountability for what they've done, you know, and what is being done. And the second thing is, um, you know, accountability in terms of finances. So, you know, we, I've seen that you have a health funding page, um, that people can actually contribute into. So how does, you know, accountability for that work? And the third thing is, um, now I've actually come to let people know that this is actually an African movement. This is an African movement, um, my brother, I'm here, he's from South Sudan. So, you know, he wants to see Nigeria because he knows that, you know, invariably Nigeria is better, other countries will be better. So what is your link? What do you have in mind, you know, to put into place when you become a president? I really do hope you, you want, you get to that stage, you know, to deal with other countries that are dealing with a lot, a lot of these issues like Cameroon, oh my goodness, that guy is, um, the worst person ever. So pretty much that's my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's see what this.
Uh, hello, uh, my name is Kell, uh, thank you very much for coming this far to Australia. Uh, I have a very simple question. Uh, I do like your ideas and what you stand for, what you believe in. I, I quite certainly support your idea. I think Nigeria needs change and, and, you know, and in, uh, a new prospect, you know? We need to see the future, a better future for Nigeria. My question is, how are you planning on going about this? You know, on winning this election? Because it's a, it's a really tough one, you know? It's going to be a struggle and a, and a big fight. I'd just like to know what's the plans you've got in place? Because, um, I want us, the young people and everybody that believe in you, believe in you, Nigeria, to support you. So we really want to fully understand what the plans you've got to, to be able to take this election, you know, take on this election, take on these two big guns and to be able to win the election. Because I think that's very important. It will also help your campaigns for, if we try to understand what's the plan, so.
Thank you. Do you think, uh, you must, you are back there?
Uh, okay, um, I come from finance accounting background. I do have a finance application for Cornell in the US. Uh, I'm doing a process and evaluation university of Melbourne and I want to sponsor this.
That's good. You're, you're going to give us your, uh, question about this, right?
Right, I actually work in systems engineering, so all this hacking.
Basically.
Uh, let me hear this. Please, no, my friend.
Uh, good evening everybody and, uh, to our president, Mr. B, thank you for coming. Um, hmm, the, I want to make a comment and ask a question. And I will introduce myself as well. Uh, my name is Boule Anishel. I'm the director of Trivatist Foods and Infinite Prosperity Consultancy. Um, uh, my job is not limited to food manufacturing. You know, I consult on agricultural industry, auto ad-hire to agricultural products. Like, for example, uh, cocoa, coffee, corn, would never, never go anywhere on process into so many, uh, products. That's what I do. Uh, on the wish, uh, the president said, uh, people said he doesn't have experience. Uh, this is a comment. And I would like you, this is a opportunity, to see that the president is very inexperienced in looking. Is very inexperienced in electoral voting. Is very inexperienced in money laundering. Is very inexperienced in political assassination. And this goes on. So we thank you, Mr. President, to be that you are very inexperienced in those things that has kept our mission down. Now, uh, my question to Mr. President is this. Uh, the, uh, there's so much in poverty in Nigeria. No matter what any society does, if there's no rule of law and there's no consequences of action, uh, of taking bad action, that country will never progress. We've seen so many people indicted for corruption. They have always go and file perpetual induction. Nobody has been convicted, the circle, it's a vicious circle that, uh, revolves and revolves all the time. So, Mr. President, what are you going to do about the rule of law and poverty? Because if there's no, whatever our rules or programs are, if there is no consequence for wrongdoing, we are still going to be in the same, uh, position. So thank you, Mr. President, for having the, uh, time to come for us and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please, and, and we try to keep the time so we can go strictly to the points so that, um, we can quickly wrap up with the question and answer session.
Thank you once again. And, um, the first question is about party, AAC party, IRP. Uh, the AAC party has a hierarchy of leaders at the national, state and local levels. The party is actually about two months old. But the movement, which is the Taking Back Movement, is about eight months old. So we have grown very fast. It took a short time that most of the thing that we've been around forever. The great news today is that, uh, with the way we are growing, even by the online features, they have admitted that we are the number three most popular party in Nigeria of ninety-one political parties. The other two parties are popular based on bad reputation, of course. And they are past record, which is horrible in terms of killing record, remember what? So I'm chairman of, uh, AAC Potent, uh, for working towards having elections that will have permanent leaders elected. But most of the states have already elected their leaders. And we have grassroots representation all across Nigeria and of course internationally, including of all places, Melbourne, Australia. Today, there is no political party in Nigeria where you can find this number of people chanting their names and, uh, putting their reputations on the line to support their programs in Nigeria. Finance, well, we have, with financing assets transparently through GoFundMe, which is known as crowdfunding. And so today, I think we raised over eighty-seven thousand, uh, dollars on GoFundMe. The highest amount of money ever raised by Nigerian politician publicly and transparently. We have a Nigerian account, the Sailing Bank, uh, where we raised over almost twenty-something million naira. Uh, and we announce on a regular basis how we raise funds and also, uh, working on accounting for them on a regular basis as well. Of course, we thought way of raising funds, true what we are doing here today. Don't forget that apart from the town hall meeting, we are totally here to raise funds. This is the reason why I'm traveling from one end of the world to the other. I have lost, you know, count of my body clock. I don't know where I am right now. So that tells you how difficult it is to raise funds. In Nigeria, the other big political parties just sit back. With this money, they're stealing over the years. On election, they, they hand out a five thousand naira. And that is how we win elections. But we want to defeat that ideology that makes people think that we stole the money, you can buy people's conscience and make them vote for you. Uh, the African movement, I agree with you, that is the African white movement. Nigeria has always been seen as an important part of Africa. In fact, the most important part of Africa. That even South Africans, when they are doing better than Nigeria, they still say they want Nigeria to be the leading country in the world. As I usually describe Nigeria, it's like the trigger of the African continent. If you look at the African continent, it looks like a beast facing down. And that little beast cannot fire until the trigger is restored, which is Nigeria. Uh, Kell, I was saying the importance we have in running the election. It would be my advice, I would caution assets not to expose too many of our strategies openly. Our enemies are no shame, they are no conscience in giving them ideas to execute how to win the election. But generally, we have grassroots existence. We have covered a lot of places around the country. Of course, our biggest challenge is funding. Otherwise, I would have announced to me that this election is over before the election. Nigerians are very, very keen on moving away from the recital style of leadership that set Nigeria down. Where it's, they are aligned with our mission, our mission and our programs and manifesto. Nobody has lived the challenge of manifesto in terms of its ability to deliver on key areas of development. We have a manifesto that came with what they call, uh, KPIs, so key performance indicators. That is, United, they measure how we are going from time to time to a quarterly basis, monthly basis. I am not going to become a president of Nigeria that celebrates hundred days in office. I see people need to wait for hundred days for the eight. Or a president that will wait for six months before appointing ministers. We need to hit the ground running. But this is the good news as well, is how we've come. While we are still contesting for office, ideas that we have propagated is being borrowed and stolen presently by the ruling party. Uh, including yesterday, probably you heard that they have ordered the road contract on Lagos to Balagri. They were, they were going to Balagri and complaining about the fact that before, we, I don't like calling people Balagri to succeed from Nigeria and join Ben and Paul because it's better. They joined Ben and Paul, they're trying to stay in the country that is contained in them. But now they have ordered the contract. You heard about how we declared June twelve, the local city, and we stole the idea? Yes, you know, we've done so many things that they are still in the window that we are starting to pull back from exposing assets too much. Uh, but we have plans, we have structured a place to deliver the election. What we don't have, which we are not afraid to say, but sometimes very shy to ask, uh, because sadly, we don't have the finances to deliver really the biggest blow that we have delivered to the political class in Nigeria. Uh, and this ties to the issue of, uh, consequences. Uh, our brother, Boule, I just was saying that, you know, Nigeria don't have full of law. Uh, our brother Boule Adesel was saying that, you know, Nigeria don't have rule of law, that is true, but, you know, the best consequence that can be delivered to political class in Nigeria is to defeat them next year, and that will usher in a new era of the end of impunity and the beginning of the rule of law. The rule of law cannot work in a country where people are accustomed to the rule of town, or the rule of law, or the rule of teams. So, the moment that big consequences delivered onto them next year, you will start to see in Nigeria a change from that day on. Uh, Nigeria is such a dynamic society that if you see new leadership, you'll be surprised at the same Nigerians that don't used to queue up for buses, we do so if there are buses that will take them to their final destination. You know how Nigerians are, they can exist in hell or hell, you know, because for them, order is relative, you know, you have order is the first rule, and the hell is the last rule. Nigerians can exist anywhere you want to go, depending on the leaders. If the leaders start doing what is right today in Nigeria, you'll be surprised how Nigeria will look next year. And you can tell from the way Nigerians adapt and attack on society, or their societies. In Nigeria, that is, that we don't have waste of traffic, in Nigeria, the moment you get into Australia, in fact, the police have knocked it off, they seem to have done blame all kinds of side, and then, we don't have to adapt, but where you don't have the conditions that it's rationality, what do you expect? You can't blame the people, so what's back out in Nigeria. Uh, Boule, by the way, the last question there, uh, has, you know, and this is what I have been praising, it's got like this great ideas with food security, food manufacturing and processing, you know, he gave us food this afternoon, and after we finished, he didn't want to scare us, he said, the, uh, black IP cooks, you know, that we just ate and cooked two years ago. If I knew, I would not do that. But when tasted, I said it was just cooked, you know, this is Nigerian, who, who knows exactly how to process food. From the shop, you can buy a pussy that is already processed, and it's been in packets for two years, and if you tell your own woman, it's a same in this cooked it. And what I can think about as an aspiring Nigerian leader is, this is right there, how to feed children through, you know, to have this massive processing of food, and if you go send a package to schools around the country, people can have lunch, they can have breakfast, they can have dinner before they go home. That's, Nigerians have all over the place three great things, you know, these skills are there, they're not absent for much, they just need the kind of leaders that provide objective conditions for them to deliver the best for their country. So I'll take the next, uh, three questions.
Uh, thanks, let me just make one to my place. Um, very shortly, we are be signing the license for persons, you know, and we are here to give our support morally, yes, but financially. Because you see, I was discussing with a group of my friends in UK in twenty sixteen, and I just said, look, our fathers are filled house. The question is, are we going to fill our own children? The average room, the average age in that room, I think, would be about forty plus of my must have, you know, because I know just wherever you see Nigeria and the guy that we talk about, or what's happening in Nigeria, and I have talked with the special and said, look, you guys are here, you're on there, you're here, you're enjoying the vibe, but don't ever forget that, as a person, you may say you won't feel your children, I mean, that's why you're walking past here, trying to provide for them, but as a generation, even if you give them the best to your own child, as a generation, we will still have feel our own children, irrespective whether you are from Australia, you are sending your kids to the best school, or you are in US, or anywhere you are. So that is why, when Shorire started this campaign, it's not just, oh, Shorire wants to become the president of Nigeria, it's a generational thing, and that's heated argument with, uh, Cheezy, that in Transylvania Minister. It's supposed to show boy that statement, it was to a generation. And, look, we may not be remaining in this hall tonight, we don't need crowds to do great things. You see, we must be able to identify with this idea and say, it is our time to take back Nigeria, not just for us, but for our children's children. You know, for some of you that know it, it's more about me, you know, I'm here on scholarship because someone see the potential in me and willing to pay for it, even when my government cannot pay for it. But I'm not holding on to that, I'm still going to go back and give back to my country. So what am I saying tonight? The morning has to start coming, the greatest fight is that, uh, the greatest challenge that AAC has now, it's money. And if you, if I'm willing to beg, I will beg you tonight, our target tonight is for us to be able to raise as much as possible, thirty thousand, uh, Australian dollars to forty thousand, I mean.
Yeah, let's see.
Take it back!
It's festival, boys. AAC.
Take it back! Take it back!
It's, it's not by mouth, but we're taking back, we have to put our resources into paying our own needs. We are about a hundred in this place, if rock contributes two hundred or three hundred dollars each, they're getting close to it. So this is the account, and you can be sure that this, every money that goes into this account is to AAC, that is means, so please start sending in your information, uh, well, a good leader will always live by example, so on behalf of myself, because the donation has started.
Ladies and gentlemen, AAC.
The donation has started, please, because this food will start coming, you know, really want the donation to start coming, please, so, um, yeah, uh, food will start coming, donation has started. So number four, please, come and ask your question, don't forget to tell us your name and your area of expertise.
Thank you for the donation, I can just be the first person to permit tonight.
Thank you. Vali Oikou is my name, uh, my confession, um, the criminal justice practitioner, so I work with the Department of Justice, our recognition, uh, I've got a few comments and also questions. Uh, I'll start by quoting one of our revolutionary colleague, uh, Francis Panon, when he said that every generation after the relative obscurity will discover the ambition, had to betray it or to fulfill it. So, our colleague is fulfilling the ambition for our generation. Uh, I have crossed in the early eighties, I was at, uh, Union of Great Abolita, we were close to people like, uh, Francis Avayomi and Eliza Tatar, and also Vali Okoni at Lacoste University. Uh, so you do this for our generation, and we'd be really happy to have you here. Uh, my specific question is that, one, I follow your campaign and the progress we made in the last six months, but have you all reflected, there are names, there are people that I know within the pro-democracy group, the human rights groups, both within and outside Nigeria, that personally I expected to be part of that campaign. I'm not so much a comrade in Nigeria, some in North America, some in the UK, I would like for you to shed more light, was it in the leadership strategy, not to carry something around, or was it a sort of Nigerian in Nigeria, I would need a clarification on why this thing is not bigger than, you know, that Shorire, I know you carry it around, but I was expecting some people that they are not part of that campaign, that's my number one question. Is there someone also, is sentence around, uh, the movement and the danger of people with that movement, one of the major criticisms of the campaign is that this, this sentence is that, it's all about within the student movement, but in order to really win an election in Nigeria, in a very practical terms, we need to go beyond just the most student movement. So what are you really doing as a campaign to become more independently viable and more independently more competitive by a really, really regional grassroots, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, number five, please. Yeah, what's this?
Thank you, um, my name is Sam Darijewo, I'm a student of, um, Masters of Social Work at Fadcham University. Um, I have two questions. First one is, I saw one of your interviews on Ares TV, uh, the other party, about my family, and you mentioned something that, um, I've been defeated from some massive investment in education in the eighties, and you have something that you mentioned from Nigeria, and so you want to give something back. Um, for people of that generation, some, the very reality that reveals is that Nigeria has not done anything for me, so what is my gain in sacrificing something for Nigeria? I'll just have to take all of my family and bring them to wherever I have to go. So what, in that case, they do not do much really, they're extremely apathetic, that's the reality. So what is your comment to get these people to be part of this, to be taken back movement? Second question is, um, I listened to your spicer in, uh, translation, and I've been looking for what particular campaign do you have for women and girls in Nigeria, women and girls, thank you.
Factory.
Number six. Number six, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone.
Oh, pastor.
My beloved brother, I thank God for this opportunity to meet you personally, having been following you for a while. When I met you for the first time was, I think there was an event somewhere, maybe in the States, where the official stunned very much, and, uh, when they thought he's there, you know, business associate, he took the mic, and, uh, I think that was the first time I was introduced to you. Ever since then, there has been a lot of things that, uh, I have listened, I've been following you, and it's been an honor to really meet you personally today, I thank God for that. Now, my question is, you touched it on your opening address, because Nigeria has quality people, and I look at you, I see hope, but I have written in many places and I have said in many places that if God create a brand new Nigerian and drop him down in Nigeria and make him president today, he will end up like everyone else. And the reason is because of the structure or foundation. The father talked about new one, and he said you cannot put a new one into an old white seat. I'm looking at you as this vibrant new one that is ready to do something, but the problem as a doctor, which here we have doctors who understand that for any sickness to be properly cured, there has to be proper diagnosis. Nigeria problem can be traced to that document we hold as constitution, and until something is done to change that constitution, because that is the breeding ground for everything that is happening to Nigeria. We call it constitution, but it's actually a decree twenty-four that is put together by the military with the open statement, "We, the people of Nigeria, pray that Nigeria is a league of nations." I want to know what is your plan? You, when you mentioned that, I thought, wow, that is it, and that's what I'm here to really ask, what is the plan, your plan? Because every other person hasn't said anything in terms of, yeah, they are talking restructure, restructure, but for the mental flow for Nigeria is what we call the ninety-nine constitution. That is why the current, uh, um, members of Assembly, House of Assembly and mothers, they are eating fat because of that, nothing can change until something is done with it. What are your plans? Can you do it? Because that is the question, thank you very much.
So, before you answer, I, very sorry. Okay. Well, if you like to say that, before we do that. Um, so guys, um, we, I could see some donations already coming in, uh, but with this, I have a question, and I said that we're going to play the game for the fundraising, I ask everybody to participate. The reason why we're donating to this account is we want to collect people together in Melbourne and send a group up to Shorire, so you can know that here, this is the amount Melbourne's going to raise, because the Melbourne is not going to disappoint. So, um, what, any question and answer, so what, we'll get back into the fundraising, but you can see both of them now, after the question and answer, then we start the fundraising.
So, thank you. Uh, question number four from Vali Oikou, he said, right, the pro-democracy campaigns not visible in this campaign, I would say unfortunately, it's both yes and no, uh, we had a high profile meeting with Feri Farah, leading, Feri Farah is the leading pro-democracy activist in Nigeria, where we took a decision that I should go and find a political party first, and after I have a political party, I should form a pro-democracy community, and they've taken a decision as to how far they want to go, yes. The movement is driven by pro-democracy activists, maybe none necessarily the big names you are using, but if you left Nigeria twenty years ago, Nigeria did not remember where it is, so there are younger, very rebellious pro-democracy activists that are running there, they are not frightened of this movement. Of course, my family is a pro-democracy activist, is our teacher for the campaign and the movement, so, who are second, who are less young, are as well as pro-democracy activists in today's, uh, the part of the answer that may not be palatable is, you also understand that the people who are pro-democracy activists, a lot of them have been sucked into corrupt race, uh, that Nigeria became, some of them are legislators now, some of them are consultants, some of them are embedded within the deeply corrupt system, uh, I'm not handing a condemnation on anyone who decided to join the movement, but we no longer have that, we don't need the body of values, pro-democracy activists, a lot of them have also been decimated by hunger and poverty, that they no longer, they don't have the ability to improve anything anymore. So not only pro-democrats should be part of this campaign, what about the young people that led Not New York to run campaign? The movement, Harry Sanders, in Not New York to run, so many of them cited links, they own people, it's a bit the contradiction of, uh, our country, but we are going back to another meeting of pro-democracy activists very soon, and you hear more from more of the technical. Uh, last question about students are writing our movement, well, you know that when you want to do a revolution, you start with your good soldiers, you use your background, my background, I'm well known mostly as a student activist, before I went to My background, I'm well known mostly as a student activist before I went and studied Sahara Reporters. Sahara Reporters is actually something I did differently because I was not happy with the media. I have no media experience. I was never a student in Nigeria, as most of you know. But technology aided rebellion in the media space and it was a successful project. For students, uh, the people, the young people, those whose future are greatly affected. And any movement that is revolutionary, you know, we have people who are grieved. And Nigeria's students and youths are most appreciated because seventy percent of them, and they are not apologetic about the fact that they want to take their country back. So we are very privileged and lucky to be leading that movement. But beyond students, we have a lot of people participating outside. The people in that's where I'm from, there's a huge diaspora influence in our movement as you can see. All the way from South Africa to Australia, you know, we are heading to London very soon, Ireland. We have invitation from China, of all places, Japan, Japanese people are disturbing me, I should stop over in Japan. How far is Japan from here, by the way? Uh, number five question that Larry Shumino asked, that I said, I got something and I'm giving something back. You know, I said that generally, you know, if you look at what Nigeria took from me, I do the calculation, minus what they gave to me from what they took from me, there's nothing left. So if you want to look at it, they have nothing, I have no reason to go back and give anything back to Nigeria based off of what I received. Because I only received three years of free education between nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty three. And Buhari struck, cancelled free education. Ever since then, I have been handed the shortest end of the stick. Having been expelled from the university twice, I've never had a job in Nigeria, no job. I have never received scholarship, received a free education, I said I received. Uh, at the University of Lagos, it was almost no tuition. I went to University of Lagos for forty five naira, ninety naira for accommodation. That's all. I was beaten, tortured till today. They are still after me, you know, even in the powers of the traditional ruler, Abusti Agas in Nigeria. They have no, I have no reason to think that I have something to give back. But there's a spirit that is pushing me and it's in the heart of everyone of you. Is that spirit that you just know that something different can happen in Nigeria? And you are somehow drawn to it and different, you know, most of us are pushed by different reasons and different forces. Some are gravitational and some other ones are the opposite side of it. But somehow, no matter how successful you are, in fact, the more successful you are outside of Nigeria, the more the likelihood you want Nigeria to be successful. Because as we are doing this movement, the people who are likely to oppose Nigerian development are the poorest people. If you go to Lagos now, the people who are likely to follow Volatino who are people who are poor. If you go to Darac, the people who are saying that Buhari must come back are the poorest people. Yes, it's those of us who are successful, particularly outside of the country, that are at the forefront at this time, asking for Nigeria to have, to make progress by fire, by force, as they say in churches in Nigeria. The people in Nigeria sometimes, they fight us, they remain us. Aria Boys hold us to ransom during this campaign, I've been here to ransom over five times, Aria Boys. I have to explain to them, are you happy that this is the country that you rely on, five naira, five hundred naira? They said they don't care that Nigeria can never be who they gave. Why are people doing that? They want to collect their instant gratification and they don't believe in any politician. There's nothing we can tell them that they have never heard before. So the people who are likely to oppose the agenda for development of Nigeria are people who are mostly affected, they are the downstream people. And that's why the work is complex, but do it, I can tell you. Uh, spicy hate with women and girls. Definitely, when you have a program or project that is talking about education without discrimination, they are talking about girls and women. When you are talking about security, who are the most affected by security? People regularly, I think the women, health, girls, women. And but specifically, we have said this in the notes, we not have seen in the document, we said this at various fora, that we will come to government with fifty fifty leadership, both women and men. So our ministers will be fifty percent women, fifty percent in fact. We were furiously searching for female vice presidential candidate. But you know, we were looking more in the northern part of Nigeria and they have suppressed women so much in the north that there are a few women who wanted to come out, they said they would kill them. They will come out close to Harira. So not a, not a lot of them were courageous enough to want to be big. He said they don't know how to sustain this over time. But the liberation that girls, women need, men need will come from what we are doing now. And of course, specifically, there will be projects here that are in terms of protecting them, are absolute people of law. Women, girls that are oppressed, that have been discriminated against still in our system. It is unacceptable and our party makes no pretension about the fact that we will make sure that they are given a place of glory. But most importantly, I said this, there are more women in Nigeria than men. If women decide to in Nigeria that they want to vote for a presidential candidate, they will win their election free and fair and fair. But I also think that I see that kind of self censorship by women. Because society hasn't allowed them to openly express their preferences or their freedom. That they need to also break away from it. And I think this movement has given a lot of them a chance to express themselves. And we have women government candidates in AAC, we have women House of Work, uh, candidates and I think senators as well. So we can boast of that we break the effect for women in the party. Our, the last question was about the Nigerian constitution. Uh, I was there in Nigeria in nineteen ninety two. We attempted to stage a sovereign national conference or a constitutional conference because other countries were ruling. And the police came and arrested all of us. It was led by Akav Ashalun at that time, our student leader under Baban Higa. And ever since then, we've been saying that the military has no right to impose on Nigeria a deputy decree, decree twenty four, you're right. A constitution that says both the, that we, the people of Nigeria, when the people of Nigeria were not part of the decision that brought about the constitution. A constitution that the teammate was undergoing a referendum. And it is same thing that happened to Nigeria. Nigeria should not be afraid to confront its police. So if Nigeria has been just to a lot of people and they are asking for restructuring, Nigeria must allow restructuring to happen. But in a room full of people like this, if we don't, one day Nigeria can escape what it cannot hide from all the injustices that are done against different nations within the Nigerian nation itself. I think we should that Nigeria is a nation state made of nationalities. But you know what, what is still not a fact? It's not the fact that we speak different language, it's the fact that we have a system that is just and unfair to the Nigerian people. Even the big elephant in the room, which is the Biafran struggle. What is it about? It's about justice. If there's justice today, better to the Biafrans as we know them today. They have the most at stake in Nigeria. Most Nigerian people man is the one that has, 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 you know, if you look deep down their mind, they don't want to live in Nigeria because Nigeria presented a greater opportunity for prosperity. But without justice, nobody wants to stay in Nigeria. I said to people, assuming Australia, I woke up one day, I said, they want to carry Australia into four and they allocate one to Nigerians. So they want to bring in as many Nigerians as possible. Seventy percent of Nigerians are willing to leave Nigeria today. They have, with seventy percent of the population of Nigeria, will be willing to leave that country. A lot of Nigerians, not necessarily Biafrans alone, have mentally seceded from Nigeria. They are just waiting for their visa to leave. A lot of Nigerians are living in Nigeria today, are living in Nigeria because they are trapped within a nation state known as Nigeria. But when you bring justice back to Nigeria, Nigerians will stay in Nigeria. How many of you know how many countries in the world to which South Africans have gone, visited? A lot of countries. But South Africans are not traveling to those countries because they don't need to live in that country. You go to South Africa, the same highway you have here, the system is the same they have in South Africa. The same educational system you have here is almost the same what they have in South Africa. The same prostitute system you have here is the same way they are. Why would a South African want to go and stay in Australia? South Africa is nine hours from here. I have not met a South African that came to Australia who says I migrated here and they are closer to Australia. Because they have no reason to come and be between the dead shot sabotees in another advanced country. But everywhere we went since I came, Nigeria, Nigeria, everywhere, pharmacists, Nigeria, doctor, Nigeria, engineer, Nigeria. A lot of Nigerians are leaving the country and run more elsewhere because Nigeria is not habitable for a lot of Nigerians. So we take the last, yes, well, let's take the last four questions before we go. Number six, and then after we can answer all of them.
Number seven. Sorry, this would be, this would be the last question here.
Last four questions and we can, we can go back to where we are here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm honoured to be with our president today. I've been following you online and I've been seeing what you've been doing. I follow Sahara Reporter. And today, I'm really happy to see a young person like this speaking on behalf of our generation. My question is, do you have a godfather? Because in countries, even in Australia, we have politicians that still rely on people they go to before they do anything. When I saw you coming out of Brisbane Airport, I saw you alone, without the entourage. And you've been bringing your network movement alone in Australia with the support of the people here. Do you consider seeing somebody like Obasunjo to go and be to take his blessing? Because most of the Nigerians go to Obasunjo and he will bless them. Then, how are you planning to take care of security issues in Nigeria? Because, uh, at the moment, I see that you are vulnerable. Uh, are you not scared that you will be attacked? This cabal will do something to silence you. Thank you. My name is Ademian Etona, this is Italian at one.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, uh, Mr. Akina.
Hello, A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Uh, my name is Charles Akina, and I'm a risk and immigration consultant. And my question, uh, I'll put it to three. And the first one is, what's your plan to stop the ideology of money politics in Nigeria? And the second one is, what was, what's AAC take or lesson learned from the just concluded AKT and motion election? In terms of, I look at the election, I couldn't really see a strong move from AAC, probably representing it in that area. Because that's more like a template for what could happen in 2019. And the third one is, you've talked about how we can contribute to funding. But apart from funding, how can everyone else contribute towards this movement? How can we reach out? Or what's the template or something that you've shared across people from US or Haiti? Or how can I try to reach out and make this thing happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight? All right, okay, so I think we, we, we will follow. All right, so that's the last one.
Yeah, very nice.
Okay, do you want to start working towards the end as well, so we just wrap it up?
Hi, good evening, all, and welcome, Shorin, President of the Banking. My name is Elbit, some background is property valuation. So we undertake monetary care to work for balance in Australia. Now, my question relates to your campaign, one of them, Stopland, which is Take It Back, correct?
Yeah.
I recall as, as a young man, uh, in the primary and secondary school back in the days, I was meant to believe, I'm writing so too, that I'm the leader of tomorrow. That's all, you know, we used to be told in school, you are all the leaders of tomorrow. Now, several years down the track, the same leaders who were in power when I was told that I'll be a leader of tomorrow are still the same leader that I see today.
Is it gonna be your daughter?
Hey, well, maybe I'm also. My question is, how, how do you intend to? I mean, what sort of strategies do you have in place to, um, tackle this hydropower problem that's been there for god knows how long? What plans do you have to actually take it back from these people, this cabal who have hijacked it from us for so long? My second question relates to my background. So if you look at the Nigerian, um, property industry, the mortgage industry is almost non-existent. There's no data in Nigeria. Sometimes I question how people undertake the valuation profession in Nigeria. So is there anything in the making, um, to sort of engender that? You know, that mortgage industry where it now becomes easy for people who, no matter where you are in the world, to get onto the property that they without having, as they have it now, to pay full, you know, the full payment for the property if you, if you try to buy one. Any plans for that? Thank you.
Uh, hello, my name is Seth Foddu. Uh, I am an entrepreneur, a business owner. Uh, I just got a question very briefly about, uh, the social media and what the AAC team is doing with it. I know the AAC and the Take It Back movement disputes how, about social media and that's how people are going to feel about it. I've been following the movement for the past six to seven months now. So there are, I've just recently observed that, uh, uh, there's a lot of talks about article and worry. And it's a sign though that the AAC movement is taking the back of the niche from the social media that you know them to, uh, you know, to, to be of, you know, at the forefront of. Um, so what are you guys doing? First, I've been watching a lot of surveys, you know, things on the internet. And I can see that out of the polls, if ever you're doing the four, five, and the lab, you know, I look at all sorts of, what's articulated and Buhari are still taking those to spot. So it's a sign the AAC movement is making this space of, you know, what you actually own. And so what, what are you doing to take the media back and get your lane out there, get the team out there, get AAC back up there? And, and reach as many people as possible.
Yes, thank you very much. Welcome to Melbourne. My name is Michael Wong. I'm a legal practitioner, uh, I'm doing my master's degree in energy and resources law at Melbourne University. Uh, also, you talked about sponsorship from the Australian program and also with beneficiary. Uh, my question is very simple. What is AAC's, what is going to be AAC's foreign ports if they come into governance in Nigeria? Is it going to be through west, through east? And what's A C's view on, about the impending popularity of China in Africa? Because some of us have deemed it as a scramble for and action of Africa people issue. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for these three questions. And like I said, we will try to the best to answer these questions to the best of my abilities. And the first question is about godfathers. I have come to retire godfathers. I have a particular passion to the people you regard as godfathers. To the extent that I will promise that if going to Barcelona's house is the only way to win international, I would never let you. That the people would destroy Nigeria, the people would destroy your future, I mean, your past and never guarantee your future, as well I said during the conference.
Take it back!
I don't believe in godfathers. We have ceded a lot of our democratic space to this criminal godfathers. And it is time to dismantle, uncool and abandon them, trash them completely. We can do it. So I don't have any godfathers. If I had godfathers, you would have known by now, somebody would have found out that there's somebody waiting behind Sherere. Of course, before now, you know, they allocate godfathers to be as suits their agenda. There was a time, he said, I was working for Obasanjo, when Obasanjo was fighting in Atiku. When Atiku was having a lot of heart, he said, I was working for Atiku. And when Jonathan was having issue with the Arab black avatars, he said, I was working for Jonathan. When Jonathan was having issue with Bouhari, he said, I was working for Bouhari. When Tinu was having issue with Bouhari, he said, I was working for Tinu. All kinds of rumors and lies fabricated, thrown at me. What's the role today that I stand on? And I believe with a clear conscience, we can defend the godfathers in politics. So I monetize our political system and commoditize the conscience of our people. So no godfathers for me, I'm very sorry. With regards to security, you know, I'll say this, I don't do security properly and I don't make any sense. But the best way to be secure in a country like Nigeria is to fight for Nigeria that is just and fair and egalitarian to all. You know, physical security is not something that anybody can boast of. Nobody can be secure in an unjust, unfair country like Nigeria. When I decided this, to take on the system, I decided to forego my personal safety or security. And I've been doing that since I was in university. Throughout my university days, there was almost fat in front of my university gate and I'm attacked. And yet, we fought the military and brought about the opposition and they're not fair, not right. Putting the gentleman at the back who went to UNA, the rest of our culture in our world, we fought very hard. So I don't want to be distracted by looking over my shoulders. We have marched towards a revolutionary salvation of Nigeria. Security should not be an impediment for us. I would rather that this country becomes secure next year no matter what it is than for me to be secure in a country that is insecure. I can always ask about money politics. What are we doing to retire money politics? I think it's to bring up ideas. And we are always asking for these ideas. We have to make ideas become the new currency for engaging in politics in Nigeria to retire money politics. That is not to say that money will not play any role because even here in Australia, I'm sure your politicians need money. And some of you, just to be, some Nigerians spend more money in politics of other countries. When Obama was running, the Nigerian community gave Obama more money than any African, Nigerian group. In fact, they raised two billion Arab for Obama in Nigeria that never paid into Obama. And not listening. They raised money for Obama. They had Obama to lose, you know, Obama and Kara, which was fraud. So what money policies can do for us? I mean, the best what money policies can do is in Nigeria, you see today, for the politics of ideas we retire that. But it's also for us to understand that money doesn't come from big men in the country. As we're sitting here in this room, there's possibly Nigerians sitting around here who can afford to give us twenty thousand dollars to fight this battle. But hasn't policy been self-confined to the point that Nigeria is what stands in the best place? And it's not going to do that. We are Nigerians who are watching us, listening from all over the world. You can afford to give us a lot of money. But they haven't been able to see Nigeria as worthy of investment. And that's our job to ensure that they convince them, to push them to that position where they can support progressively a country that works for all. Every still talking about the campaign slogan, Take It Back, Take It Back is what it is, is Take It Back. If you have officials pulling from you, your road to education, health, security, power sector, everything taking from you. For you to move in another pressure, you have to recover everything first. And we're not the only ones using Take It Back, by the way. Recently, in the US, they started using Take It Back. Obama was leading a campaign to take America back under Trump. So the idea started from us in Nigeria. But it's a popular idea, of course, but when people are cheated, when they feel they've lost something fundamental to their existence. They use the hashtag Take It Back. You also mentioned strategy to Take It Back. Well, listen, we are mobilizing people, we are organizing lectures, we are changing ideas, engaging in social media. We are challenging the status quo and we are confronting them wherever they need to. Somebody mentioned earlier, I think it was the MC, that they didn't understand what this was about until they saw the radio show I had with the minister. And that radio show didn't last one hundred and ten minutes, maybe it was forty minutes at most. It was between me and the Minister of Communication, Minister of Miscommunication, and the various, the analog minister. It was there, mind you, after that interview, that we established the need for generational change in Nigeria. And everybody watched that interview and said, this is it. This is the reason why Nigeria cannot go to these people. This is the new voice of reason and the need for us to support, the need for progress in the country. You mentioned about properties in Nigeria. I think what is killing the Nigerian property market most is interest rates, if you ask me. Apart from the fact that you mentioned, there's actually data base in Nigeria. I, in the course of our research, discovered that there are four places where people are gathering data in Nigeria. But there's no data synergy. If you go to the immigration department, people collecting passport, they are collecting data, including their bio data. You go to I N E G, I N E G is collecting the same data, your bio data. You go to bank, they have your data, B F V D, your bio data. You go to driver's license office, they're collecting data. You go to phone companies, they have the biggest amount of data. Phone companies have about ten million Nigerians in their data base. But we don't have like a data security solution that can make the government be in possession of Nigerian data. From there, you can tell how many people are in housing, what our interest rate should be. There's no way you can have business flourish when they are borrowing from banks at rate of twenty-seven percent interest rate. Even America, as capitalist it is, as it is, their general interest rate is around four to seven percent. What in Nigeria are at the seven percent interest rate? There's no way you can afford to borrow in social economy. If you borrow at seven percent, there's no way you can pay back. So who are the people who have access to borrow? The same teams, politicians. And when they borrow and they cannot pay back, Nigeria then takes away their trust debt, and pay them, you know, and buy them over through the program, the scam organization. So for most of the way, I think, with the same kind of housing in Nigeria, we have to do what they do here in Australia. Every first time buyer of a home should be entitled to grant from the federal office. And that will encourage a lot of people to get into the property market, the main property market to be fluid. And we can have low interest rates to start with. And I call it Nigeria, but governments as a group, our priority must get a gain of housing for Nigerians, for Nigerians of Nigeria. We are short of seventy million houses in Nigeria. We have to build that first. You have to create the property, you have to build property first before you can create the property markets. Otherwise, a lot of people are priced out of the markets. And you cannot have a conversation that is rational when the landlord wants to pay for two years of rent in advance. One landlord in Lagos has been for fifteen years of rent. And yes, they say you can pay fifteen years of rent in advance. I'm telling you, like, in fifteen years, they're wasting all their life to focus. And this Nigeria where, no, it's crazy. So you mentioned about social media, Atiku, Bouhari. I want to tell you something about social media. There's a difference between inorganic social media presence and organic social media presence. What you say Atiku and Bouhari mean on social media, they pay for it massively. Atiku is not paying less than twenty million Arab to some Americans who have been brought into the country to help with social media strategy. So they are creating fake accounts, you know, and they are doing fake posts. But at the end of the day, with the money they are spending, when you dig deep down to the organic nature of interaction that people are having. We are doing better than them. But they are able to use the money stolen from the Nigerian people to control the social media space. But I tell you, even with all of their money and the means we have, we are really participating in it well. For example, it's very difficult for anyone to reach us on Facebook. Anyone, they have done this several times. Now they have left Facebook and moved to Twitter. It's very difficult for anyone to also defeat us on this time now. Even by allowing a million followers on Instagram, Instagram. But also forget that they also use celebrities, they pay celebrities to help them manipulate public opinion. So for example, it's a developer that has come with young people, they go get paid. You are aware, dear, how many of these people get paid money? So even sometimes it needs to see that is looked at, that is presented as some kind of investigative report. It is written by them, presented in newspapers and newspapers reported, as seen with their original works. They pay, they pay off the media, they pay off the conventional media. Now they are paying off people in the social media space to ensure that they do not have an opportunity to behave. But the truth is that organically, if we are doing organically, we are doing better than them in terms of people who are real, who are genuinely engaging. But what I'll tell you, which is important is that it's not enough for a company that we're not doing on the social, social media. You also have to get in the social media space. You must have noticed something on Facebook in particular. If you put a status update on Facebook, real people will not comment, but bad people, they will send comments of the same guy. On the status of the person, he wants to dominate your space in social media, he discourages other people. But your friends who are there, instead of there to comment, you now call you on the phone, guy, see your status not there too. It's very nice. You'll tell, why don't you make a comment? Because they have to take a stand in a place that it is not dangerous to do so. What is it, you are calling me or you are liking, it's, you don't have to, you should do something for me. There is a time to invite people not to be afraid to take a position in one Nigeria. So if you have a friend that is written, that is articulating, you too can put under it, we are deactivating articulators. You know, and it becomes dominant opinion when people say that, oh, chief, who they respect the Lord, stated his position on Atiku. Oh, pastor, who they respect the Lord, stated his position. But if pastor takes a position in a different section of Facebook, which is where you give reaction, where you like. Sometimes someone doesn't even know the difference between what they like and what they don't like. Because Facebook does not let you, yes, does not let you express your real emotions. But the best way to express your emotion is to make a comment. And I urge you guys to do that. If you are not on Twitter, get in the game. Because you take over the social media space from bad people. Bad people make you look as if they are representing you when they came, when they claim that they are articulating. Whereas they are only helping ventilate for corruption. So that would be my position on social media. Nobody has a space of, I tell you, we have spent up to hundred and fifty thousand dollars since we started. Atiku in one day, one day, in Botaco, spent twenty million dollars to buy delegates. Well, not buy, they do buy the P D P presidential candidacy for himself. Twenty million dollars. We are looking for two million dollars, this investment, that is how much we want to go funding. If we get this, no one of these guys, the election will be over before it is over. We know how to deactivate them. We are fighting them. I am a cabal, you know, what we call Cabasai, the killer of cabas. We are doing this killing cabals within the Nigerian context. And we can do more, we just need your support. With our two million dollars, Atiku spending two hundred million dollars, we still not be able to catch up with us, we may not come. Because there's no way they can sanitize their houses. There's no way Atiku will tell me that the three hundred or something pages documented about this corruption by the US Senate is not true. It's not possible, it's public information. There's no way Atiku will explain to me how he made this money from customs. There's no way Atiku will tell me that he has plans for education when he has private school that most Nigerians cannot afford to go to. There's no way Atiku will tell me that he's in love with Nigerian children when he's never done anything to help them before. He has only done something for himself. The sentence with Bouhari, there's nothing Bouhari has to offer. And it's very clear, Bouhari is naked as to speak. They are all in trouble, but we need you morally. And morally means that get in the social media space, call people at home. In fact, people are placing sanctions on their families over this matter from abroad. If you don't vote for the right candidates, you are not hearing from better union for me anytime soon.
Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
ALC!
Take it back!
Our message is sinking. We have enormous influence on our people at home, I will just use that influence. Because they use their own influence too on us, so it's time to reciprocate. Atiku, finally, someone asked me about A C's foreign policy. If it's from west or from China or from America, no. Our foreign policy is going to be pro Nigerian person. What does the West do? The West supports our citizens. If an American is held up anywhere, the American government will send a judge to administrate. If a Nigerian is sentenced to death, it's the Nigerian government that will be asking the government of that country, when are you using him?